All right, I'm going to call over the Monday, July 1st, 20th of the planning commission in our meeting room, so first time I went here. Excuse us if you don't know how this room works. All right, I will call.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Ms. Teats?
Here.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Krosner?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Oh, I'm here still. I wasn't tuned in yet. Sorry.
All right. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, that's my favorite part.
All right. Second. Mr. Stevens got the second hand. All fair?
Bye.
Opposed? All right. Well, now, Speaker, she is speaker, and do I have any, well, any speakers on?
No.
Things not on the agenda? Which brings us to our first action item, which is a motion of appreciation for Planning Commissioner Lindy Hockenberry. Before I do that, I don't know if we have any members of the public that would like to take their three minutes. Good. I know Ms. Hockenberry just had a nice little reception over at the farmhouse.
Yeah, we even had food. We've got cake over here that we could mess up the chamber with.
I don't know if there's food allowed in here, that's...
Oh, well, we could always just go somewhere.
Yes, we have some cake. Ooh, I'm going to say something. All right, because Lindy went here.
Name and address. Oh, sorry, Ross Lipkanaus, 105 Cedar Lane, Falls Church, Virginia, 22046. Three minutes, I won't talk long in there. Lindy, I just want to let you know that you're an inspiration for me to run for council, and I appreciate your mentorship. Leading up to that run, you gave me the good, the bad, the ugly, what I could expect, and I will tell you flat out that I've got three daughters, and when I think about them in a position of what I would consider true servant leadership, that there is no better representative of that in this community than you as a councilwoman, planning commissioner, and teacher, and servant to the community. So thank you for everything that you've done. It's absolutely incredible and amazing, and I can't appreciate, I can't tell you how much I appreciate everything that you've done for me personally and also for this community. So thank you.
Thank you, Ross, and it's great to have young people coming on up on council and everywhere. Yes, indeed.
Speaking of young people?
There's a young one. There's a young guy.
Dave Snyder, 116 Gray Falls Street. I was one of the bad and ugly that Lindy tried to talk you out of running for council.
Say the word, Dave.
But I want to say this, there is no one in my experience that has served the city longer and more effectively and in more different and critical capacities than Lindy Hockenberry. And the people were always first. The kids were always first. And as a result of that, hundreds, dare I say, thousands of people got their start in life in a positive way, thanks to Lindy. One other piece of advice she gave me when I first came on council, and I really tried to follow it, she said, and I think she and Harry pulled me aside once. We had dinner here, and they said to me, "Now, don't you ever balance the budget on the backs of police officers and teachers." And I've tried to live up to that in each and every budget sense. But Lindy, so many people that are not here owe you so much, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Always have those budgets to work on, and it's rough doing both sides, I'll tell you. Hi, Dan Z.
Evening, all. Dan Z, 313 Pennsylvania Avenue, City of Falls Church, 22046. You have never known Lindy to be shot. But there came a time when we had the groundbreaking at George Mason High School. And I was standing next to her, apart from everybody else who was standing over there, we were over here, and it came time to grab the shovels, and I said, "Lindy, we need to go up there." She said, "Oh, yeah, go ahead." I said, "No, Lindy, we need to go up there." And so if you look at the pictures that Nick took, here's Lindy standing next to me. And the lesson I learned from that is, as she's wont to say, it's not one person, it's all of us. It's what we do together that counts. And she said, "Look at all these people here. Look at the children. They are our future." And I said, "Do you remember what I said?" I said, "No, Lindy, we are the future, all of us. Thank you for your service."
Thanks, darling. Thank you so much. You're awesome. Oh, boy. Hey, Phil.
I'll be brief. Phil Duncan to 14 Southwest Street. So it was 20 years ago that Lindy and I met for lunch at what was then Broad Street Grill to talk about her budding political career. She was retiring from teaching and thinking about running for city council, and we had a nice chat, and I went back and reported to Tom Clinton, who was going to run the CBC campaign with me that next spring, that I thought we had a good prospect. And, boy, we had no idea what we were getting into. Lindy has been part of, as you'll hear in the resolution that you'll read shortly, every good thing that has happened in this community for the last 20 years, and so many good things have happened here. We just are so deeply appreciative of your commitment, your attendance, your functioning as, you know, somebody who goes to other groups' meetings and helps share information sort of away from formal meeting times, which is so critical to building consensus for action. People have, you know, no real appreciation of the thousands, tens of thousands of hours that Lindy has invested in the community since she became an elected official, not to mention all that she'd done for the kids before that. And I'd like to close with that by just saying that I'm appreciative of what you did for my daughter, who was an excellent student, for my son, who was, you know, took a little while to become an excellent student, and the fact that he finally did, and, you know, is doing well now in law enforcement in Arlington, is directly attributable to the influence that Lindy and many others, but that Lindy particularly had, that he's sorry he couldn't be here tonight because he's on duty.
That would have been so cool in uniform.
We talked, yeah, no, I've been kind of scared to have Tyler walk in, but we talked about you last night at dinner, and I just want to thank personally all that you've done for, not only the community, but for my family in particular. Thank you.
Those wonderful, wonderful kids. I've just been so lucky to be a teacher and be part of this city, and I just, this is my home, and I just absolutely love the people in it and love the school system and love, you know, the city all the way through, and I think we're on a good way of going. Oh, darling dear.
Here's Beth Hockenberry Erickson, formerly of 309 Timber Lane, Falls Church, Virginia, and Pine Street address.
Yeah, 303...
306.
303.
Apparently we like threes. And we have our family here this evening, if everyone will stand.
And by the way, all those lovely young children back there were all babies back when I was sworn in, particularly Ella and Julian, raise your hand, wave, they were little babies sitting back, probably on that back pew back there in the old one, and then, but those are four of the six of my wonderful ones.
But I would say my brother and Caroline, myself, we were all products of Falls Church Public Schools, and we are very thankful and very proud of you for everything you have done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Piling on. Hi, Wyatt Shields, 900 Parker Avenue. Lindy, there's three things I wanted to say tonight. First is a personal one. For our kids, you were one of the first people they met in the community.
I know.
And so when they were first going to TJ, and they were scared, and they were maybe getting in trouble, they saw a friendly face, and I think that helped them so much, and they've always really loved you, and they've...
Oh, the feeling is so mutual. I adore those two.
You made a big influence on their lives. But two things I want to add to that. One, just from the perspective of city staff, you have always been so supportive of staff, but also challenging of staff. I would characterize your attitude as always one of supportive impatience and a desire for action and for getting things done. And lastly, what I would say is what does make this city so great is the way that citizens stand up to say, "I want to take responsibility for my community," and probably nobody better represents that than you, and that's why so many people have turned out at Cherry Hill Farmhouse and here tonight to celebrate what you've done. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Wyatt, and I'm so glad that you've been such a wonderful leader, along with Cindy, and then before that, Dan McKeever. You know, was on board when I was first elected as city manager, and just another wonderful, wonderful person. We have such great people on staff, and, you know, and you guys are lucky. I've saved you. I've saved you over there. I went down, I had some stuff written out, and I went down, pulled it up to remind me of it, and it happens to be the receipt for my new glasses. So you have lucked out, you know, just lucked out all the way around, but I did have some words over there at the reception, and just the fact that I think that our city is at just a wonderful place, and I think it's been, we have come so far since 2000, when we had empty lots on our main street, and we have rolled along, and it's just been my pleasure, because I do, I do am very, very progressive as far as good development goes, and I think a lot of people will sometimes say, "Oh, you shouldn't have done it, you shouldn't have done that," but they don't know some of the ones we turned down. Nobody ever remembers the many, many ones that got turned down along the way, and we said, "Ah, it's just not good enough," and we weren't happy with them. But I just think that with the city staff and everybody on the staff is such hardworking, they wear so many different hats. You know, any place you've got a small, small type of government or business, you've got to have people who are multiple, you know, and their talents, and we've got them. And then the boards and commissions that we've got are so strong, and I think that this is, I've just loved working with this crew up here on the planning commission. They've been very patient, because I do tend to talk once in a while, and, you know, just occasionally, but I really, they've done such a good job, and we've got so much good stuff going on, and really, the epitome of my lifetime is going to be that school when that gets open, and that's just so incredibly important to me. But I was so blessed that I came to work here, and could have been Arlington, it could have been Fairfax County, but my then-husband, Bill Hockenberry, and I interviewed in all three places, and both of us got a job here in the City of Falls Church. We were told exactly what room, what school, and we were set, because we had the two kids at that time. So it worked out beautifully, and just the fact that I've had such an incredible opportunity to do all this, and I'm just so thankful for being here and being part of this community, and I love you all, and we'll find Tony the pony someday.
Any comments from commissioners before I...
Yeah, just very briefly, we've had a lot of lofty comments, but I just want to say as a relatively new member of the planning commission that thank you very much for welcoming me to this board and giving me the background at a point in time when I didn't know very much, so thank you for that.
I'm always willing to share. And Cory, you're coming into a wonderful, wonderful group, and we'll sit down and talk, and I'll tell you the good guys and the bad guys, and, you know, and all that kind of stuff, but you're walking into a wonderful, wonderful situation, and I know things are going to continue onward, because you are very much of an environmental person. Just think of all the stuff I've learned about environment since, and all the knowledge I've got about development and, you know, infrastructure, and we've supported Walter Phillips', you know, company really, really well. They've got a good thing going. We are, you know, but, yeah, fantastic.
Yeah, so I feel like I've known you forever, Lindy, although it hasn't been that long, but, because we've been bumping into each other since I was on ESC, and you came on the planning commission, I think, like, three or four months after I did, so we've pretty much been on the planning commission together for a long time, so it's going to be, it's going to be weird not to see you somewhere in here near me. I do think the thing that I love the best is that when I see Lindy, if she sees my children at school, she'll start to say, "Hey, I saw your girl," or "I saw some," and I'll be, "Oh, good, you're going to tell me something they did," or like, "I'll catch them on something," but she never tells me anything bad, she always tells me good things about my kids.
Wonderful kids.
Well, they are, I think they're wonderful kids too, but I pretty much know that they get in trouble. But anyway, Lindy's a great person, because she's always like, "Your kids are wonderful and beautiful," and so she's just, it's just nice to have someone so positive, you know, just, and I think that positivity really reaches the children, which I think that's really great. I do say, I think we're going to miss you, because I believe you're the only person who actually reads our planning magazine from cover to cover. I will look through it, I will see an article in the front, I'm like, "Oh, okay, let me read this article," and, but Lindy will come in and go, "Did you read the other articles?" And I'm like, "No," so she pushes me to look at this a lot more than I do. I think Tim also reads most of the articles, but some of them are...
We're both retired, don't try to stand that.
But it's good to have you, you always look at it, and so you'll clue me, and there's a couple more good things in there, and so I think that's, it's always good, on planning commission, we get this planning magazine once a month, and we're able to go to some of the planning events the APA does, it's American Planning Association, and it really does help you to see what's going on in other communities, and Lindy also is always looking for articles, the Washington Post, or anywhere she sees them, she'll share, so it's going to be, you can still send us articles.
Oh, well.
And I'll give you my...
And I'm not going anywhere. And trust me, I'm not going to go anywhere, and, yeah, I'll be around.
I can't, I don't think there's much more I can add than has already been said. I would just say is that, I guess the youngest member of the planning commission, Lindy's record of service is both, when I learned about, the depth of it is both intimidating and inspiring, and I think you've set a very high bar for service to your community, and as somebody who is also very deeply committed to serving the local community, again, you've set a very high bar, and an example that I think will shine for a long time to come. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and you're a great addition, and you bring in stuff from the other side of the world in Fairfax, yeah, fantastic. Say something nice.
Yes, sure, Lindy. I'm going to get this resolution soon, and there's some of our audience has other things to do, but I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I've known Lindy since back in 2008, 2009, when I was on the EDA, and Lindy came to a lot of our meetings, and then we kind of joke about Tim, you know, if there's ever been a meeting in the city, Tim has been there, but, you know, Lindy's the original Tim. Lindy's gone to, I'm sure, just as many meetings as Tim's ever gone to.
More.
And I think the result is, on the planning commission, we've totally relied on Lindy's sort of historical knowledge of basically everything that's ever happened in the city, and that will be sorely missed. I assume we can phone you when we have questions about the history, because I'm sure things will come up, and we'll think, well, jeez, if Lindy were here...
If you'd even text me, I know how to read texts.
We would know the answer, so obviously Lindy will be missed. And I know that Chair Wodisca would have said nice things as well, he's out of town.
Yeah, where's my dear?
And he expressed that to me before he let us know he couldn't be here. So I'm going to read this quickly, hopefully.
Right, and where you get to the Hockenberry, just replace it with Lindy, it's a lot easier than the Hockenberry.
All right, I'll go with Lindy.
Okay.
All right. So here we go. Whereas, "The City of Falls Church Planning Commission does hereby express its deepest gratitude to Lindy Hockenberry," I'll say it once, "for her service on the commission from July 2008 through July 2019. And whereas, "Lindy assisted the planning commission in reviewing commercial residential and mixed-use project applications for special exceptions, resignings, site plans, and subdivisions; and whereas, "Lindy advocated good planning and community participation in these important land use and site redevelopment decisions impacting the future of the city; and whereas, during her 11 years of service, the planning commission met in numerous work sessions and meetings to consider development applications, code amendments, small area plans, and comprehensive plan updates; and whereas, "Lindy assisted the planning commission in reviewing multiple major mixed-use redevelopment projects, including Lincoln at Tanner Hill, 301 West Broad, Founder's Row, Northgate, and the new George Mason High School, and the West Falls Church Economic Development Project. And whereas, during her multiple years of service to the city, Lindy was selected to serve as the planning commission's liaison to various city boards, commissions, and committees, including, but not limited to, Arts and Humanities Council, Economic Development Authority, Housing Commission, and others. And whereas, "Lindy brought to the planning commission a key understanding of issues relating to overall good planning, thoughtful redevelopment, community involvement, and school interests affecting the city's future community, land use, and development objectives; and whereas, "Lindy, through her tireless efforts, support, and commitment has been integral to enhancing and improving our city. And now, therefore, be it hereby resolved that the City of Falls Church Planning Commission, with heartfelt thanks and appreciation of her dedicated work and valued service as a member of the planning commission, hereby presents Lindy this resolution of appreciation on the first day of July 2019."
Awesome. Thank you.
I've got, I've got the resolution here, as well as this plaque, which, this plaque says, "Presented to Lindy Hockenberry, in appreciation of her dedicated and valued service as a member of the City of Falls Church Planning Commission, your tireless efforts, support, and commitment has been integral to enhancing and improving our city."
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lindy.
You guys are awesome.
You need to hold up the plaque so people can take a photo.
You guys are awesome. I love you.
I don't know, you planning commissioners, get together.
All right, there we go.
Oh, come on. Well, somebody else is going to have to...
I'll hold this one.
They can see it up there.
It's good. It's going to be in here also, all right.
Oh, yeah, definitely with all my goodies.
Here we go, symmetry here, all right, good.
Come here. Now, what are you doing?
Look at the camera.
Which camera?
Look at the camera.
You're going to start over there and then come over?
All right.
Duncan first.
Okay, I'm done.
Over here.
Lovely. Lovely. Thank you.
All right.
And these flowers are from the city council. They're very, very beautiful.
Oh, they are lovely.
Hey, just to correct one thing before anybody runs away, I was not selected to go to all those things, you know, you guys, you just didn't want to go.
You...
So, you know, and since I had the privilege of not having to worry about little ones at home, I could go to all those things.
Well, thank you very much.
Now you're going to have to pick it up. Whoa. But anyway, thanks again, and I know you've got some stuff going on afterwards, and I do so appreciate it, and I think that maybe I will just go and leave you to it.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Then I won't find out about the library until I watch, and all that kind of stuff, but I'm sure the library's going to be wonderful, and, boy, do we have a lot going on in the city. But anyway, I'm going to go enjoy my family somewhere along the way.
Yes, well, thank you very much, Lindy. I'm sure we will see you around.
You were so lucky. You were so, I just laughed when I pulled that out. I said, "Oh, my God, here, I worked on that. I'm going to join you."
Wait a minute, wait a minute, should you do one more planning commissioner report? What mean is, did you go to...
Yeah, do you have any, we'll jump ahead in the agenda.
Just as a...
Do we need a vote on that resolution?
Yes, we need to take action on the resolution.
A whole call vote, or...
Yes.
All right, we'll take a vote to make sure we...
Oh, okay.
We kind of assumed, but let's make it official.
Give you a moment to think about your...
Yeah.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Teats?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Sure.
Mr. Krosner?
Yes.
And Mr. Stevens?
Yes. Do you have any planning commissioner reports?
I don't know.
Some are, not much is going on.
Well, just breaking the ground for the, but they still haven't dug yet.
They better get on it.
Seriously, I was up there yesterday.
Schools, yeah.
I was up there yesterday, and they haven't started digging holes.
They're never going to find Tony if they have to.
And I know, but, yeah, I was kind of disappointed. The fence is up all the way around, so it's secured, but as we were worried at the last meeting that, you know, things hadn't happened, and now it's, what, two weeks later, and so let's hope they get, move on. I'd appreciate that greatly, but, no, it's, I don't think much, you know, is going on. EDA...
Yeah.
A lot of places, like Rexon Park's on break for two months.
Yeah.
Yes.
Everybody's taking a snooze as they need to, and everything like that, but I will continue forth, and I'm so jealous of all this.
Well, you can come sit in sometime.
So jealous, look at this. You can stay now.
Stay now, or, all right.
Don't forget your flowers.
Yeah, your flowers. You should have had your family help you carry this stuff. You can take the cake.
Oh, God.
You had a bunch on. Hungry mouths to feed, we saw them.
Your cake.
All right.
Do you want me to walk the flowers out for you?
Yeah, would you? Thank you.
Tom could probably help.
I will, I'll give it to Tom. Keep going, I can hear.
Sure.
Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome. All right, we don't actually have much else on the agenda of the meeting part, we do have several things, a work session, but this actually is the planning commissioners' report time. It is a little slow, but anybody have anything?
No, really no meetings going on right now, so...
Yeah, all right. Do we have a planning director's report?
Just wanted to highlight the upcoming schedule.
Okay, yeah.
So we have that up on the screen, so for our next meeting, we have the comprehensive plan update housing work session, and then we also have a work session on the George Mason High School site plan. Then our next meeting will be in August 5th, and due to some rescheduling of some things, we've got several things now, and so we'll see how that shakes out final for August 5th. But right now, we have action on the library site plan, which is a subject of a work session this evening. We also have action on the Columbia Baptist site plan and a recommendation on the variance that's scheduled for August 5th as well, and then the site plan for the George Mason High School, the final...
1B, or...
Final action on 1B. We've approved 1A on June 3rd, and then the final action item that night is the comprehensive plan chapters for housing and demographics. So you have a work session on demographics tonight, you have the next meeting, a work session on the housing, there's been some committee work on that at an interim, and so there were some revisions to that, so that'll be coming to you at your next meeting. So that was an update on the schedule. I'll be working with the planning commission chair on August 5th to make sure that's manageable, but that's what we've got tentatively scheduled at this point. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Gary. And that's all I have on the agenda of meeting items. Anything else, anyone? No? So I guess we can adjourn, go into work session? I don't even know how that works now.
Yes, and the applicants are, you know, we can come down to the table here, we have plenty of chairs for that, or planning commission can stay there, and the other participants, but usually we come down to the table, so...
Yeah, but that was when we had paper.
Yeah, exactly, now you've got nice screens and everything up, so...
Yeah, I think that's...
I'll let you decide how you'd like to, do you want to take a five-minute break and then get ready, or just...
We can go right into it.
Just go.
But do you want to move to the table?
I think we're ready. This is the first time we're in this room, so I'm trying to get oriented about the best way to do work sessions.
So why don't we ask the applicant for the library to come up to the table here?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, okay. So we have openings on both sides, and the chairs are here, and then in terms of staff report, we'll be with the microphone, yeah, and then we'll, we can move this microphone over for discussions with the applicant, if you like.
So staff present here, applicant...
Actually, staff's here, and the applicants are there, yeah.
It's all new.
Yeah, at least that's what we were told, so...
Yeah, this is our first meeting in here, and Gary, do you think this is still being recorded, probably?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think you just pull them up. This is also our first meeting in here, so we're learning how this works. I didn't even know there was a little gate over there.
Yeah, there's a gate on both sides.
They just need a microphone, is there a microphone?
I think Gary's going to take his over there, or maybe that one?
Great.
This...
And so staff, the microphone here.
Thanks for joining us. Alright. Thanks for joining us. Do you have a presentation, Akita?
Yes.
Great.
The project team has a presentation. Should I go before I turn it over to them? I'd like to just highlight staff before we do that, okay?
That's great. Do you think your microphone's on?
Just taking the screen.
Okay. I can hear you.
If you do need planning permission, uh, you know, climbing, um, the City of Falls Church has filed a site plan application for the renovation and expansion of the existing Mary Riley Stiles Library. Decided before you sign for preliminary feedback to the applicant and staff to site plan this and then it will be scheduled for August 5th, the final action. Site plan seeks to construct a two-story building addition of approximately sixty-six hundred square feet on the existing library structure located at 120 North Virginia. The last time the planning commission saw this project was December 3rd of 2018. When the commission gave positive recognition to BCA on several variances. The variances include reductions in the front yard setbacks along North Virginia and Park Avenue. An imperious lawn coverage of fifty-seven percent, which is over thirty-five percent allowed under code. Their recommendation to BCA, the planning commission, had included several items for applicants to refine their site plan process. Those include location of curb in relation to the face of building, design of the street scape and parallel parking, spacing, location and species of street trees and other planting. And number four, to bring stormwater management and the empty of the current standards. The applicant is working with staff on addressing these items currently. Any tests submitted by site plan responsible staff compensation on May 23rd, which is also attached to staff report. On the stormwater management, the plans include construction of a stormwater bio retention filter, which provides both detention and water quality improvements for the proposed addition. It will reduce phosphorus loading by ten percent, which would reduce the heat run up to a level of low existing conditions. The current proposal would meet city and state stormwater management requirements. Alternatively, the applicant could analyze the entire site for stormwater management, but staff's understanding is this would not be feasible at this time given the project's scope budget. The current site plan applicant is also seeking several waivers, including waivers to eliminate the required tenth of perimeter, partial lawn landscaping, a second waiver to eliminate the required five percent interior partial lawn landscaping, and modification for apartment reductions to provide sixteen parking spaces and required six floor spaces. Additionally, during review staff, as identified previously, I need to address and advise submission. They include intersection improvements. We would like to see thirty percent design of the intersection at Park Avenue and Virginia Avenue shown on the site plan. But the applicant would be expected to construct only the active corner and the library site as part of this project. Second item is the library center plaza. We would like to see the Inky Plaza as a great sitting space, which may include identification of features for Parker, special pavement, seeking, landscape plots and the like. Third item is the TBM, the draft transportation demand management plan, should be included with future submission. That includes the staff board. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to take them. Our city engineer, Al Melvin, is also here to answer any question about stormwater. Otherwise, it can't be referred to the applicant's permission.
What's the size of the space that a civic plaza could be considered for?
It don't have a specific size. It is considerably large space at the corner entries. I would like them to do something there. And it don't have a size, but...
And?
We have that extension bumped out. It creates a little Inky space.
So the plaza is the sidewalk area, basically?
That's right.
And then there's like a little bit of entryway area up the stairs. Alright, okay. And 'cause you're saying the sidewalks will bump out into the street, sort of like we've seen in some other places or in town?
Have extension.
Got it. Anything else? Alright, I think we're ready for that part. I think you can do it at the table with the microphone, right? They don't need to... It's fine. It's fine. If you wanna go up there, you can.
I'm gonna go through. Okay. You need my name and address?
Uh, no. We're in work session, just... You're welcome to share your name, but...
My name's Mark Manetti. I'm the architect with BKB Group.
Right.
Very excited to be before you. And this project, we've been working on for about now, about a year, and excited to see it move forward. So we have a small presentation. This is a presentation that went before the AAB as well. There are some refinements based on staff comments, but by and large, it's the same. We're looking for hopefully some direction, too, with respect to the civic space. How do you advance? Do I just ask? Okay, thank you.
Just wave your hand, it'll happen.
So since this is the first time you've had a chance to see the project, give you a little bit of background. This is... We're building upon a master plan that was completed, I think, in 2014. The master plan had identified the expansion of approximately sixty-six hundred square feet, two stories, for Mary Riley. It had two separate locations as options. The option that we settled on was the option along North Virginia Avenue. During the preliminary master planning process that we went through, building upon the previous process and developing the program for the project, we looked at a couple of different master plan options for how we would cite the addition. And one of them looked at an addition, basically, you know, centered on Park Avenue. And then the other option was to look at the corner as a potential way to enter the facility. And as we went through the community outreach process, it was something that the community really landed on. And they really liked the idea of entering at the corner, of connecting North Virginia Avenue and Park Avenue and creating kind of a node on that great street area. During the process of the, you know, meeting with planning staff, the streetscape guidelines were discussed, and our intention is to meet those streetscape guidelines. And what we're... What you're seeing right now are perspectives along North Virginia... Along Park Avenue from the corner and also along Park Avenue. And there's two other perspectives as well. And we can go back and forth to them. But you're seeing along North Virginia Avenue, the grade of the street does fall off dramatically. One of the concerns that we felt that we needed to address was we did not want an overwhelming mass along North Virginia Avenue. And because the grade does begin to fall off, and we did wanna create kind of a higher... An area that would get some more daylighting into the space, and the ceilings are quite low in the current facility. But we wanted to be cognizant of that, so you can see that we've actually broken the massing up into kind of three different zones. The higher zone to the right, and then kind of intermediate zone with those three arched windows, which are characteristic of the previous construction. And then, of course, the corner entrance. The nice thing with this large volume, this is the one place where we're gonna be able to get quite a bit of natural light into the building, which is really important. The building is, especially on the lower level, doesn't have much daylighting opportunity. So this is something that we really wanted to take advantage of. The children's library is actually gonna be relocated to the lower level, so that was also, you know, something that was within our thinking. One of the keys that we came from... We came away from the initial meeting with staff was, again, that we wanted to look at what we might do at the intersection of these two streets, develop some type of concept, and integrate a civic plaza. There's some challenges at that corner intersection. The grades where those two streets come together, and then the desire to extend that corner out in keeping with the streetscape guidelines, and it creates some grade challenges. So one of the things that we would definitely look for, look for planning commission is maybe some direction in terms of what the planning commission would like to see in those areas. The next slide, this is a... Shows you in plan what we're planning, what we're doing along Park Avenue in North Virginia with the streetscape requirements. One of the things that we really think is important is that we try and achieve... We wanna meet the accessibility requirements. And the current facility is deficient in many ways, and part of that is the deficiency within the current parking. So in this concept, we've integrated a van accessible spot and an accessible spot in keeping with code requirements. And they're located off Park Avenue. And then, of course, you can see the flat planters that we're integrating on the streetscape as well. We're looking at some potential treatments as we engage that corner. And one of the things that... Is there a laser pen or anything that I can point? Let me see if I have mine. I'm not seeing it. Well, I guess I don't have it. Alright, well, I'll just have to do my best to describe it. As you're coming around the corner, Park Avenue to North Virginia Avenue, the grade is dropping off substantially. And then we're trying to engage that corner with this corner entrance, where we're entering the corner piece off both sides, where you can see the stairs are engaging the corner. We're also creating an accessible route from the ADA parking that comes up along and integrate. And you can see where it ties into the archway on the Park Avenue side. The original concept that went to the staff or comment, we had a raised planter over by the ADA parking area. And we were challenged to make those grades work, and it was creating some slope conditions that were of concern to us. So we came back with some ideas of how we might be able to handle that. So the concept that we're looking at here, again, flattens that one planter next to the ADA parking and then creates a seat wall. And then that seat wall allows the grade to disconnect from the perimeter because the... Where the grade... Where the plaza meets the streetway, that grade is gonna be set. We can't change that. Okay? And that actually pushes the... Because it's crowned, you're actually increasing the height in that corner. You're creating more of a challenge. So since that's set, what we wanted to do is to see if we could disengage that perimeter portion and then allow for an accessible connection between, you know, on the interior... I'm just gonna stand up. So, right here, this grade here is gonna be set because we know what the existing street grades are, okay? But coming down from this side down to here, what we're attempting to do is to disconnect this grade from this grade and introduce an accessible ramp. Originally, we had shown a concept with a raised planter, and the planning commission... Or the staff was not excited about that large planter element. So what we're looking at right now is just developing a seat wall condition that does... That disconnects the grades and allows us to meet the code requirements for accessibility around the corner and handle the grade challenges a little bit more effectively.
And when you say disconnects the grades, you mean that on the street side of that seat wall, it's whatever the grade is, but on the other side, you can control the slope of it?
That's exactly what I'm saying. You got it, exactly. So this way, I can slope this independent of what's going on here. Because it creates for some very, you know, difficult geometries.
Does that make it easier, then, for somebody in wheelchair and so forth to be able to navigate that?
Absolutely, absolutely. So that will be an accessible, you know, route to get around the corner and to make that grade change. Otherwise, you would be looking at some slopes that would be exceeding.
Right. And the actual accessible entrance to the building, is that ramp along the side of the wall there?
Right. And even though it looks like it's a ramp, it's actually a level grade there. So it doesn't need a rail or railing or anything, because the grade's actually falling down along Park Avenue. So if the grade falls, that ramp pretty much stays level.
Okay.
Okay.
Cool.
And so we thought that that was a way to handle the grade challenges. And we're still looking at what we might do at that corner. You know, how we might do some treatments and maybe connect to the history of the library or something like that. So, but we also were hopefully, you know, looking for some guidance. I think there was one property that planning staff had mentioned to look at, where there was some pavement treatments.
Howard Herman.
The new Howard Herman entrance?
Howard Herman.
On Broad Street, right next to the Reed Building?
Yeah, it's the special paving and the complex.
Or the Byrnes, right.
That was created in the Inky Plaza. That's what we were looking at. And we're looking at... We're looking for something minimal at that corner, to tie in the civic uses around, like Cherry Hill Park and the library itself. We don't have a solution or a design place, but we're hoping the applicant can come up with something for you there.
Right. So from that... The major challenge and what we've been tasked to do is to look at that plaza and see what type of, you know, civic uses might occur there. We like the idea of a seat wall in front of the library. We think that there's an opportu... It serves a functional purpose, but we also think there's an opportunity to engage that space and activate it. You know, there's some potential for community art, but it's not that generous. So, you know, you wanna make sure you can still circulate effectively around that, on that, around that piece. But it's generous enough that, you know, it'll provide a safe place for people to congregate around that area.
Is there still discussion? It sounded like there might have been from the documents about the tree pits and flush versus raised.
So we've dropped them. They're all flush now.
They're all flush, okay. I know that was a big issue when the streetscape commission met a couple of summers ago. And, yep, kind of people on both sides of that, so I gather you've had...
I'm on the flush side, if anyone wants to know.
Yeah. So the one curb that was elevated in our initial submission was this one over here. And again, that was to work the grade challenges out, but we've done that differently in this concept with the seat wall, and we were able to make that flush, which I think helps the overall composition because it was...
It's a tight space.
It was a tight space, and there was concern about how that would interact.
And right now, there's a utility pole that would appear in that. Have we solved that?
Well, the utility pole is gonna be relocated as part of a great streets program. Unfortunately, that's not gonna happen with this development. There was concern that it might impact... You're gonna do all this work with the pavers, and then you're gonna have to come in and... But my... Our understanding is that the poles will be underground. The utility will be underground in the street, not underneath the streetscape.
Okay. But when it's first built, there'll be a pole kinda right in the middle of that?
That's correct. And, you know, for purposes of making sure everyone understood, yes, that pole is exactly... The Cobra Head fixture isn't shown quite right, but that is where the pole is currently located, so.
And probably it's what I... If they're gonna underground, they probably wouldn't wanna do this, but I think you could move that pole across the street, or you could get someone to do it, because the power lines are on the other side of the street, down the way. And with the recent development across the street, I think the tree that was in the way is not there anymore, so.
There was discussion with city staff that we could have Dominion relocate that pole based on accessibility requirements.
Ooh, I like that.
So there may be an intermediate, but I can't say...
Sure, sure. Okay, that's good. I'm glad people are thinking about it, because it'll be pretty... That looks so pleasant, and you throw a utility pole in the middle, and suddenly it's not as pleasant.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
The sidewalk along Virginia Avenue, brick versus concrete, is that a serious issue?
We're going with the streetscape.
Oh, okay. So, come on.
Yep.
I don't know if there's a... Was there a big cost difference between the two that was, well, part of the consideration, or?
Costs are a big part of the consideration on this. And what we've received direction is to meet the streetscape requirements, so.
Streetscape adds a significant cost to the project.
Yeah, I'm sure.
That was not included in the original scope.
Good thing cost is somebody else's problem. But that is a challenge. Yes. Alright, I kinda interrupted you. Were you... Did you have more to do, or?
I have the elevations, too, the colored elevations, if we wanna just walk through them. So, again, the gray tone is the existing building, and then the color tone is the addition. So we really wanted to be sensitive to the scale of the building. This couldn't look like a monolithic addition. It had to be broken up into smaller pieces. And you're seeing, this element here was something that we wanted to borrow. We also wanted to borrow the detailing with the traditional cornice, and then, of course, the hip roof details with the slate shingles. The material palette is based on the current building. So we're looking at slate shingles. We're looking at matching the existing brick. And, you know, trying to bring some of those elements forward that were very important to Mary Riley. Unfortunately, can't really see it here, but we're looking at integrating signage, Mary Riley Styles Public Library, right over here, and then lighting it with some decorative fixtures from above, and then maybe having some small landscape features below it.
And would you have signage on the North Virginia side as well, or?
We don't currently have signage there. We were looking at what we might be able to do with a site sign at that corner as well, and maybe engage that seat wall as an opportunity. But you'll see the... Let's go to the next elevations. Right. So this is along North Virginia Avenue. Again, the three windows here, you know, the main arch at the corner. And then these mod... Window modules are what the existing building utilizes throughout. So there isn't a whole lot of opportunity along this area. We did talk a little bit, maybe, about down here, or...
Right down there, yeah.
As potential, if we think it... I mean, it's a corner.
Yeah, I just thought with the... It seems like the nature of that entrance is it's supposed to be an entrance on both streets. So I don't know if you'd wanna try to make sure someone coming up Virginia sees that that's the entrance as well. But I don't think it's critical. I just...
Right.
Curious about that.
One of the things that we're aware of, the... One of the things that we're aware of, the addition is going to have a new mechanical unit that's going to serve that. And we wanted to be cognizant of the height and visibility of that. So we did do some site sections on the next slide. Oh, yeah, there we go. So these are section AA and BEB correspond to these details over here. AA is right across the street. So if you're, if you're walking along North Virginia Avenue on this side of the street and you're looking up, you're not going to be able to see the rooftop unit. There's a little bit of concern when you're walking down Park Avenue, especially at this very elongated distance, that you might see, you know, this is BB over here, there might be a tip of the, of the corner of the unit that you might see. And then the next slide, you might get a little bit of a view of that as well. And we're trying to get that unit to be as low as we can and as low profile as we can. So, but we are cognizant of that. We can probably raise the parapet wall about another course, but we do, if you go back to the elevations, we don't want to, we don't want it to conflict with the cornice, so we want to be below the cornice on that. But we have about eight inches that we could raise it. But we don't, we don't want, I mean, there might be a little tip of that, but we don't want to do a screen or anything like that because I think that would really defeat the overall design to do something like that. So we are looking at that though. Some of the things that I didn't mention about this project is in keeping with the city's green building guidelines, we're pursuing LEED Silver with this project under the LEED V4 version. So some of the, some of the upgrades that are, we are integrating, all the existing windows are going to be replaced. And they're not going to be, the glazing won't be blue, it's just to indicate that these windows are going to be replaced. The envelope's going to be upgraded and the mechanic, and now the, the design of the existing mechanical system is also going to be modified so that it's more energy efficient.
Good to hear. Any questions?
Anyway, just picking up on some of the issues that were in the various documents, there's a challenge to add some more bike parking, is that?
Yeah.
Something a solution has come up for?
We haven't, we are, we are pursuing that. Can you go back to that, to that Streetscape plan? There you go. So one of the, we did locate the, the trash receptacles over in this corner as requested, so you have these located over here and then you have it located over here. And we're going to be looking at adding some additional bike parking in these areas. One of the things that we did, you know, we're making these changes as we go, but we're not quite there yet. There was a comment that the parking spaces needed to be 22 feet long, which we accommodated by, when we, one of the benefits of making that a flat planter and reducing the size of it was we were able to stretch the parking out a little bit. And so what that's going to do is now the access to engage this accessible route shifts down, so we can look at some additional seating area over here and then maybe some additional bike parking along the Streetscape as well. So yes, we want to make this as pedestrian friendly as possible and, and, you know, people on bicycles, it's very important that we want to be able to provide for that. And one of the things that we talked about at the meeting was covered parking for bicycles, which is really a LEED requirement. We still haven't come up with a solution for that yet, but that, you know, that's, it's kind of, you know, it's, it's a point under the LEED, but it's not necessarily meeting the goal of more bike parking, so.
I just have one question. Obviously, you're not going to meet the parking on this project, we all know that, but I get the North Virginia spots and I get the Park Avenue, but when you say adjacent streets, what are you talking about? Because are you talking about the North Virginia on the other side of Park?
Adjacent streets?
Well, it says that five spots available in North Virginia, four spots on Park, and adjacent streets has 11 spaces. There is no other adjacent streets, really.
Well, it's, it's on our side.
And then there's the seven in back, obviously, too, but.
Right.
The, the parking that's on the opposite side of North Virginia.
Right, over here.
So down there.
Yeah.
I believe they're all signed for library patrons. I could be wrong about that, but I think that they are. And then the parking that goes along Cherry Hill Park is all two-hour parking.
Right, right. Well, I was just curious, it was just interesting to me that it just said, you know, it said your, the seven, the spot you have in the back, obviously, but it said, you know, North Virginia Avenue, Park Avenue, and then adjacent streets. And I'm like, I think we're talking about only spots that are on Park in Northern, North Virginia, so.
Right, but I think it's whether.
It was just something in the report that I thought was odd.
My, my understanding was it's on either side of the streets. We accounted for the parking on our side, but then there's additional parking on the opposite side.
Okay. I think, I think adjacent streets doesn't make sense in the report, but, okay.
Do you get to include the bike share station that's down the street in your TDM?
We're working on the TDM right now and coming up with the specifics about that, so yes.
Seems like those should count. I don't really have any questions. I know you're looking for guidance on that corner. I, I would say I really like that seat wall and the way to control the grade. I think, I think there's actually a lot of flow in the corner of people that aren't even going into the library, so making that easy for people to get from the shops to the park and back and forth is great, especially when you get rid of that pole.
Yeah, yeah. If the streetlights stay there, have you gotten into the detail of which level of Kelvin? I'm just thinking something around 3,000 would kind of make it a little warmer.
Yeah, the LEDs, you can get much warmer now. It used to be it was kind of blinding white, lewish light.
Very antiseptic, yeah.
But is there, is that, is there a specific standard as part of the Streetscape? Is that?
I would just encourage to look at something lower than traditionally what's been used for that.
Right.
To add a little warmth, especially with that nice brick color that you have there. I think that would work, you know, very well there.
Yep.
All right. Do you guys have any specific questions for us or? I think this looks good. It's been evolving nicely, I think.
I mean, I know we're working on the stormwater management with staff.
Yeah.
And I don't know that, and of course, my civil engineer is on vacation this week.
So we'll ask you a higher questions right now.
I think we'll probably handle those questions with staff.
Yeah, I think that's a challenge, right? Because most of the site is a building and you're putting more building on it. And so there's only just so much that can be done, but I think as long as the staff is plugged in with you guys in terms of doing what you can do, I think that's what's important.
What are you do, I mean, I guess, well, you said your engineer's not here. I mean, are you adding any onsite detention at all or?
We're, we're creating a, underground facility.
Right now, there's nothing, right?
Nothing, right.
Right, right.
So, so right off, it's a betterment.
Right. Well, that is true. I mean, you get credit for the fact that it was previously, you know, developed, yes.
This is the only area of green left and that's the area that we're doing a detention area, a detention treatment facility.
Right. I mean, yeah, I mean, in some ways, anything is good.
Yeah.
And also as a city project, I mean, I think, again, we should always strive to set an example, even on an older infill site like this, that, right, where there's not a lot of potential to do something, but anything you can do. Same thing goes for BMPs, right? I think I saw that you're looking for, was there anything left for, for the, for the water quality?
Yeah, there, there, there's some treatment in there as well.
Slight improvement.
Did you say 10%? I can't.
Yeah. The, the idea, what we're trying to do is take as much of the existing building and bring it to that area as well, so that it can be treated before it ties into the downstream to the existing stormwater system. There's only so much, I mean, so much you can do to get the water around your building to get to that, but we are getting a, a large portion of the existing building as well as the addition to, to fall into that area. As much as that small, little bio-treatment facility will take anyway.
Right. So. All right. Well, thank you.
Did you want to ask? Maybe it's a different discussion about the parking onsite and what would need to be done in the future or?
I think it's a different.
Okay, all right.
Are there any other outstanding issues that you see with what we've currently shown you in terms of Streetscape or signage or?
I don't, I, nothing sticks out to me. I mean, I think the things you guys identified that you're still working on are the things that we would encourage you to keep working on.
We would like to see them complete, first I plan, so.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, you know.
Are there specific types of downlining fixtures or historic fixtures that, that you would be, I mean, I'm, I'm just showing some goosenecks, some decorative gooseneck fixtures.
We have like, we have a style for these.
For on Broad Street?
Yeah. I would think, I would assume the planning staff is suggesting that they align with our current Streetscape in terms of light fixtures. So that would be it. We have a Streetscape.
Right.
I don't, I don't think it touches on.
You mean for the building mounted something, lighting?
The building mounted.
Oh, for the building mount, okay.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing on it.
Oh, okay, sorry. I thought you were talking about like.
There's no specified building mount lights.
Oh, okay.
We're assuming it should be down.
Yeah.
And you mentioned backlighting. I think that sounds interesting to me.
Like a halo back, backlight?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we could look at that, too. I mean, I like that. It's a little bit different than.
My expertise is like that.
Yeah.
Non-existent, but I like the concept.
Okay. We could definitely look at.
Because it would, it would brand it, I think, in a very nice way.
It would definitely be more visible. I, you know, I worry about, you know, what, you know, I mean, I think we could do it effectively, but you're going to get shadows cast down on it. And I think if you did halo backlight or some type of, it would definitely pop.
What about lighting inside the entrance, entryway?
Yes, there will be lighting inside the entrance. So it'll kind of radiate out through the, through the windows up at the top as well.
Okay.
And I think this is what we expected, that, I mean, we've known how long there would be landscaping waivers and parking issues, so we just need the outstanding stuff done, the stormwater and everything else. And consider what little space we have, it looks pretty good, you know, architecturally.
Yeah, I think for all the challenges that you have, it's, it's starting to look pretty good.
Yeah, I like, I like the wall in front that there's, because people have traditionally sat out there on the current wall, so it's nice that there's still some places for people to sit out front.
Yeah.
All right. And just, and just from the staff standpoint on the parking issue, you mentioned the TDMs, you're working on that to resemit. So, I mean, the planning commission can modify the parking requirements, but we have to have something, some analysis or study or TDM that's robust enough to, to address that. You know, right now, you've got 15 spaces on the street adjacent and you've got 12, you know, with the seven onsite and the other that are designated. So in order to, for them to be able to even modify the parking requirements, which is 64 spaces, you need to come up with justification through the code, which is mentioned in the staff report. So we're going to need that in order to package it for the planning commission to modify it. Without justification to modify it, it's a variance, so you need to provide that in a timely manner so we can keep on schedule.
Okay.
When you say timely manner, how, how much in advance of, are we going to be doing the TDM?
There's probably been a letter with comments. When was the last time that was sent?
You should, you should a letter and a schedule has a tentative submission, I think I can't remember if that's, if we follow that schedule, you should be on schedule for 20th and 12th.
Otherwise, we'll have to do it in September, so. But we need, we need the material to review and to assess and to comment back on, so, you know, we, it's, it's important. We can modify it, we just need to be able to work through the, the code applications that allow us to do it. And the planning commission has the authority to do that with the TDM and some, there's shared parking, there's offsite arrangements and so forth. So, I mean, it's acknowledged that, you know, you've been deficient on parking in your operations now, but in order to modify it with a new site plan and expansion, more space, we're going to need the, the material to do that, so. We're relying on you to get it to us so we can analyze it and get back to you.
Okay. Yeah, and it sounds like somewhere there's a letter that maybe lays out the schedule. I mean, our, it's on the current agenda for August 5th. They obviously need time to review it, put up, we always put a package together a week before, so that's a built-in week right there. And then I assume they need a week or two, depending on everything else you got going on to crunch it. I think, you know, I think, you know, we know that there'll be something there that we have to deal with, but it would be good to see the nuts and bolts of how it's going to spread out. It's typical thing, there's lots of parking in the area, it's all split up and hard to use, which is annoying. But, so that sounds like something there giving you a hint. Definitely work on that.
Sure.
Or we could have a scheduled challenge. But I think the, a lot of the other stuff looks, looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, okay, next we have on our agenda, the demographics chapter and then two W and O D things. I don't know who's doing all those things and who's in the audience, but if we want, if we need more, if I don't, if we could flip those, would that make it easier for people? I don't know who's here.
I would say that, yeah, the items C and D would involve more people than item B. So if you want to flip those.
Does that make sense?
Put B at the end.
All right.
The same staff member that's covering B and the, the other items, it's got to be here for both, so.
All right, well, let's do C and D first because it looks like we have guests for that. And then after that, we'll jump back to B. And we'll.
So we'll start off then with the W and O D trail crossings and dual trails.
Sounds great.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Sykes. I'm a planner with the Department of Community Planning and Development, Economic Development Services. Tonight, we're talking about the W and O D Trail Crossings Project. There are two projects that are currently under design. One is a city project, which is a crossing project. The other is the Dual Trails Project, which comes after this with colleagues from Nova Parks and their consultant and so on. Little bit of background, the Trails Crossing was initiated by the city in the adopted CIP. In 2017, the city was awarded a federal transportation grant in the amount of $622,000 to construct and improve trail crossings of the W and O D at four locations in the city. Those locations are where the trail crosses North Spring Street, North Oak Street, Great Falls Street, and Little Falls Street. In the master plan, there are general guidelines for improvements of the crossings, which include narrowing the actual roadway to 25 feet in width, raising the crossing where it's possible for traffic calming, traffic control for the roadway and trail users, special paving features that would highlight the, the trail as well as the crossing, and the, and the use of the 100-foot right-of-way. With, through the city, the trail is 100 feet wide. The idea for the concept is to use the entire width as part of the project and so on. We're here tonight to present, Shannon, do you have the? Okay, go to the first one. We're here tonight to present 30, 30% plans for the improvements. We just received the official 30% plans from the consultant on Friday. These are not reflected by this, but this gives you a concept of what we're proposing at the four crossings. In terms of timing, we need to get plans approved by the end of the year, those 100% plans. At some point, we will also have a public hearing and also approved by city council, as well as have VDOT approval before we move forward to the next stage of construction. With that said, we're looking at construction sometime in 20, late, probably late 2020 if, if things go well. Let me kind of walk you through the, the various projects here. This is North. Let me kind of walk you through the, the various projects here. This is North Spring Street. This is one, one project, uh, I'm sorry, one crossing. Um, the graphics aren't great, but hopefully you can understand what's going on here. We're narrowing the roadway to twenty-five feet, as, as was said. There is a special pavement, um, down at, from Fulton all the way within the right-of-way, which is a hundred feet wide. We haven't decided on what that looks like yet. Again, this is just a concept at thirty percent. Um, it, we're showing here that the road stops, uh, for the trail. Um, that's one of the issues that we're looking for guidance for, from the commission, is, um, at the location at Spring and Oak Street, there's, there's been a good bit of discussion among the consultant, among county, uh, city staff, and others about how to, uh, address the right-of-way issue. At Spring Street, because it's the lowest volume street there is, there's been a proposal by our consultant, Tool Design Group, to actually, uh, stop the street, which we're proposing here, as opposed to the trail, which is the normal practice, uh, throughout the, the rest of the, the trail. Um, the reason being so is, we're proposing this, or at least the consultant's proposing this, is that Spring Street carries a very low traffic volume, and actually, probably the volume of traffic, pedestrian, bicyclists on the trail is higher than what's on the street itself. In traffic engineering jargon, generally, you, you stop the street that has the less traffic. In this case, it's likely to be the, the actual roadway as opposed to the trail. So, the proposal here is, is actually stopping the street. Shannon, can you go to the next one? Next street is Oak Street. Uh, we're proposing here, again, that the trail be raised. Uh, also, it's showing here in this proposal that the street is stopped and the, and the trail has a right-of-way. This becomes a little more problematic, because Oak Street does carry a little more traffic than Spring, so it's not quite as clear here as to who carries the most traffic and so on. But again, uh, the proposal at this point shows both that Spring and Oak stopping the actual roadway as opposed to the trail traffic and so on. Next. The next street is Great Falls Street. Great Falls Street is an arterial roadway that carries, uh, probably about five thousand vehicles per day, if not more, in this area. So, under this situation, we're actually proposing that the, the trail stop as it does today. Uh, as, and you can see that it's being realigned, and our friends from Nova Parks will have more on the alignment and so on of the, of the, uh, actual trail, the dual trail in this case. Um, so we're proposing here that it stop, uh, the trail, which makes sense in terms of safety and stuff like that. There would still be, uh, signs along the roadway as there are now, which indicate that, um, the yellow, uh, yield to pedestrian type sign that would be in place here. And so, and the last shot, uh, slide is Little Falls Street. This is Little Falls Street in the Arlington line, at the Arlington line. Uh, this is also a raised, um, um, crossing at this location. Um, there are the two, there are two raised crossings out of the four, and the reason is we have adequate drainage. It's an engineering technicality that we cannot drain Spring Street, and we cannot drain, um, Great Falls. That's why it's, they're not raised at this point. But we're proposing here, Little Falls Street, um, also be raised. You can see the, the trail going through. There are some improvements along, um, almost in there, the Arlington Four Mile Run, which is in Arlington. The county, city line sort of goes diagonally through the intersection at this point. We'll have to coordinate with Arlington County. Our consultants done that already in terms of what type of review process they would accept as well as the design and so on. Um, that is basically what we're proposing. It would be, uh, again, the timing, we're working with Nova Parks and their consultant on the timing. They have a different funding source. They have from NVTA, which, which is likely less cumbersome than what we have, having to go through VDOT and follow the VDOT procedures in terms of public hearings and, and that sort of thing and so on. Um, that's generally where we are. I'll be happy to answer any questions about the design at this point. I'd also like to get some guidance about the design, overall design of the concepts that we have here. Obviously, we'll be coming back at some point in the future with a more finished product and try to get the commission's approval.
All right. Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, I have some. So, on, just looking at Spring Street first, I under, you know, I get the concept of how, and I've been, I've, I go by Spring Street a lot, just because there's a friend that lives on the corner of Park and Spring, so I go that way. And you're right, there's not a lot of traffic on Spring. And so I'm okay in theory with this, the, the car traffic stopping and the bike trail not, except I, I wonder if we could find some examples in communities where that's currently happening, because what I'm more concerned about is pedestrians who are walking down Spring. Because I do see people walk, there's a preschool on Spring Street, and I do see them walking down the sidewalks. So, I mean, are we gonna have a sign saying pedestrians take care because there's a, there's no stop sign for the bike trail that they may be crossing over as they're walking up Spring?
I don't know how we would totally sign it. This is some, a very unusual situation, as I said. Typical practice is to stop the trail.
Right. No, no, I totally understand that. So, and I think that in terms of the people on the trail who would just go forward and the people in the cars who would stop, that would work fine. But what I'm concerned about is people who are actually walking the sidewalk of Spring Street itself.
Right.
And then they're gonna cross over the trail. So is there gonna be some kind of warning for pedestrians, that a bicyclist is not going to stop for them?
I would think there'd be some sort of warning sign. Again, we haven't gone through all the, we haven't worked on all the details at this point about what signage we would have, but certainly that's a concern.
So, I guess, I guess my thought is just that, when, as we're looking at this, as you're going through the details, my concern would be, is pedestrians on the, on the sidewalks along the streets. Uh, you know, if anyone's done.
Crossing the trail.
Yeah, crossing the trail. And, um, because I've done that, and I've had bikes come right past me as I'm trying to walk, and that's with a stop sign. But, you know, so.
So it obviously doesn't work today.
Yeah, it doesn't really work that well today. I guess, so that, that would be my concern and some that we should look at, is how, how are pedestrians that are walking along the streets being, gonna be treated in this position? Because it makes sense otherwise, because you're right. I, I definitely think there's more traffic crossing on the, on the bike trail, but except, the only safety issue I see is those pedestrians. And I'm just curious if, like I said, if you could find examples of it in other communities, how they deal with the pedestrians.
Actually, I thought, on that point, though, see, I don't know, because I'm concerned about, and the trail is a regional trail that crosses multiple jurisdictions and many different streets. And I think it might be confusing to have two intersections along the thirty-odd mile course, where now cyclists need to remember, okay, here I, I shouldn't stop. I'm just concerned that it, it, I, I, I mean, people would, I mean, yeah, I guess folks who traveled every day would figure that out. And a lot of cyclists, to be frank, don't take the stop signs on the trail as a suggestion. I'm concerned, and, and, you know, on the motorist's side, motorists may not be expecting that. They may be confused to see a stop sign, you know, at the trail. Some people stop kind of out of courtesy anywhere and look, because they know cyclists fly by. I'm concerned about, you know, typically you have problems when people's expectations are, are different from what the reality is. And people, I think, when they're on the trail, either cyclists or they're, uh, driving on the cross streets, sort of have an expectation for what the rules are. To introduce an, an unusual condition in only two intersections along the entire, not even just within the city, I mean, just, you know, at those two intersections. I think it, I mean, again, people, there's a learning curve, I suppose. You could argue that in time, people would get used to it. But I, I'm concerned that it's giving cyclists maybe a false sense of security, um, you know, that, to just plow through there. And the pedestrian issue, I think, is important, too, but I'm more concerned about not having consistency. I don't know how many road crossings are on the trail. There are probably several dozen. And to have two that don't follow the same rules seems strange to me. And I don't, and I agree that the traffic, I live near Spring Street, in that area. It is very light. And so the reality is, most cyclists slow down to a slow crawl, look, and they kind of dart across today. Um, I, I don't know what we gain by introducing an unusual circumstance like that. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, well, it was pretty good. My, my third bullet point was consistency, because if these are the only two stops in the city that does this, how much education is gonna be necessary? Is there anywhere else along the trail that, that they've already experimented with this?
I'm wondering if this guy knows the answer.
Yeah, this guy wants to talk about it.
I mean, I know in Arlington and Indiana and Fairfax, there's nothing like that, so.
If, if, if I could, I could answer that question easily. I'm Paul Gilbert, Executive Director at Nova Parks. And exactly for the reasons that you've suggested, we're gonna keep stop signs at every intersection, because we have seventy road crossings of the W and O D over forty-five miles. And just like on highways and roadways, you have to have consistency, and that's what brings safety. When people understand what other vehicles, whether they are, you know, two-wheeled or four-wheeled, are doing, then, then you, you don't have as many accidents. So, if the city wants to put stop signs, then it would be a four-way stop. But we don't wanna have a situation where people get used to blowing through without even slowing down and looking, because then the next intersection, the one after that, they're gonna, they're gonna be back to needing to.
Yeah, I agree. I think it would be interesting to do the four-bike, four-way stop at these two crossings, just as a, a test to see what happens when it's a four-way. If it's a little bit more safer, I would feel better about that.
Right.
Because, because I, you know, and since you're up here, I was just wondering, I mean, are, are we eventually gonna look at having some type of speed limit on the trail for some of the e-bikes and things like that, that are moving pretty fast?
We could certainly look at, at a speed limit. Um, we have, um, the regulation that we changed for e-bikes limits the pedal assist up to twenty miles an hour. So, um, they're gonna be traveling at about the speed that the, that the road bikes are traveling at now. So not, you know, not significantly faster. Um, I think one of the, the issues with speed limits has always been, most bicyclists don't have a speedometer. Many bicyclists don't carry an ID, so it's harder to, you know, do a traffic infraction. Um, but, um, but I think it makes a lot of sense, particularly in the more urban areas, to at least suggest a slower speed.
I just have one more question, because we're here, I, because I was talking about this with someone else. Are, are scooters allowed on the bike trail? Because there was a question about if that, if they're actually allowed or not.
It's a great question. I'm not sure there's a really totally clear answer on that.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank, thank you.
TBD. Sorry.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I would just follow up on that. So given what Nova Parks is saying, that they, they don't plan to change their stop signs, I mean, I don't know. Again, maybe, like I said, it's an interesting concept. Maybe it could be done as like a pilot project at one intersection, just for a period of time. I, I don't know what the right answer is, but I feel like more study needs to be made before we would go ahead and just do it, um, to see how people would react and to see how drivers and cyclists would sort of, because it is unique. I, I can't think of any other intersection, um, that it's like that today. So it would be sort of a, an experiment, and maybe to do it as a, as an, as a pilot project might be beneficial before we rolled it out as a permanent solution. So, but otherwise, I mean, I think the improvements are good. I mean, Spring Street certainly, I always joke that Spring Street hasn't been repaved, I think, in so many years. There's still the railroad crossing warning sign that's faded out, painted on the street, on Spring Street, from when it was actually a railroad crossing, um, which shows you the last time we've paved that street. So, certainly some attention to upgrade the crossings are good, especially, you know, in light of the, the bigger project we're gonna hear about next. So, otherwise, I mean, improvements all seem like no brainers as far as safety and visibility and, and improving an already really important amenity in the city, so otherwise.
I agree. I think if you make the crossings much more apparent, they'll be safer for everyone, anyway.
Yeah, maybe a little bit of an outlier here, because I, I kind of rather liked the proposal to, to stop the traffic on those two streets. Uh, and, uh, the tool memo, I thought, went through some very excellent logic as to why you might reach that conclusion. As it is right now, um, you know, with stop signs, you know, throughout the, the city on these crossings, which ninety-eight percent of the bicyclists don't, uh, observe strictly. I mean, I'd say the vast majority of us that use the trail on a regular basis do, for just obvious safety reasons, slow down before we just, you know, barrel out across and, and would continue to do that almost with any, regardless of the signage that, that might occur on there. But I think it sends a really good signal to, to stop the traffic on, on these, these two streets. And I agree with the proposal to use it as an experiment, perhaps, or a pilot, uh, for these two streets to, uh, to see how that, uh, might work out. Uh, my knowledge is there really have not been incidents at these two intersections in the past. Um, so I think they're, they're good locations to choose to, to see if we can't, to try this different approach. So I, I would encourage you to, to, to proceed with it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, the, the four-way stop approach seems appropriate to me. I, I, um, which I think we all realize means that fewer bicyclists blowing through the stop sign will risk getting crunched, because I don't, I, you know, I think a lot of bicyclists will learn, oh, the car stopped here, I'm gonna blow through. But I think, I, to me, it's such a small inconvenience for someone driving on Spring or Oak, to, to, I think, would increase safety. I didn't seem, like, it seemed like, why not do it? But, um, I'm one of the people that almost always stops or slows down at the crossing, especially ones where you can't see. I mean, I would even say, like, at Little Falls, it's really hard to see bikes coming, and so I tend to slow down. Um, I also think when you get to that dual, uh, path thing, I think, on the, on the plus side, for pedestrians crossing the, the trail, they'll learn, okay, this is the bike part, I gotta kind of look out. Um, but I also think it will increase maybe the boldness of the bicyclists to keep their speed at some of the crossings. But I think at the end of the day, the cyclists that blow through the stop sign, that's their risk they're taking. And I, I think, um, the cars understanding the rules and following their rules will minimize problems. And if there is a problem, I think most times it would be the bicycles, bicyclists who's decided to take that risk. But I think it'd be great to try them. Those two streets seem like , uh, good places to try it.
Would those two streets, with the, that yellow safety sign that's there today, would that continue for these two intersections? Because I think, I noticed when those signs went up a couple of years ago, it really changed the behavior, you know, substantially. And the cars started to, to stop once they saw those signs. They may not read all the details or try to go look up the state code or anything, but just seeing that sign really changed behavior significantly and, uh, I think made those intersections a lot safer.
I think what happens is, when that sign's in place, that people, motorists tend to yield to bicyclists.
That's right.
They're not required to, because it says yield to peds.
Yep.
But they, uh, will, will yield to bicyclists and so on. So I think it, I think it does have some impact.
One question I have, which obviously isn't addressed by these types of sketches. For me, the biggest challenge with these crossings is, as a motorist, being able to see, sorry, see down the path to see what's coming. So, and I know there are trees and bushes and stuff like that, but I would think any kind of redesign that really focused on that, like, I'm approaching the crossing, I can look easily both ways and see if there's a bike cruising along. Because, I mean, pedestrians on foot, they don't move very fast. You can always see them. It's, and bicyclists who stop, no big deal. It's the ones that don't slow down, that you, sometimes you just don't see them until you're kind of already in the intersection, even if you're going below the speed limit. So I would, I would say whenever you get into that part, figure out how to make it look nice, but keep that growth down so you can really see down the path, from personal experience. But, uh, do you have any other questions about the crossings? No? Thanks. Okay, thank you. Onto dual paths, right?
I know, I have noticed that.
Hello, Planning Commission members. Uh, I'm Jeff Holland with the Planning Department. Uh, tonight's work session item is a first look and preliminary discussion regarding the W and O D Dual Trails Project. Uh, the applicant, Nova Parks and A M T Engineering, uh, submitted, uh, the distributed thirty percent concept plan materials to staff on June seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Uh, there's no staff recommendation at this time, as staff is reviewing the materials, uh, and discussing, uh, this project in depth with the applicant for the first time alongside the planning commission. Uh, the W and O D Dual Trails Project seeks to construct parallel trails along the majority of the Falls Church portion of the W and O D Trail. It's approximately, uh, six hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven square feet, to include, uh, both a shared use trail and a dedicated pedestrian trail. Uh, the project, uh, as, as presented by the applicant tonight, consists of a replacement, uh, of the existing ten-foot-wide shared use trail with eleven-foot-wide bike trail and parallel eight-foot-wide pedestrian trail between Broad Street near the West End and Little Falls Street. At this time, there's been no formal site plan application, therefore no modifications to the code have been identified. Uh, the applicant's submission of these concept drawings and the purpose of this work session is to allow staff and the planning commission to get an overview of the project. is to allow staff and the planning commission to get an overview of the project at an earlier stage before it is formally submitted. The W N O D Trail serves several purposes to the region, in providing a space or a place for recreation and exercise, connections to activity centers and transit facilities, and provides access to the city's commercial districts. The W N O D Master Plan envisions the trail as a grand 16-acre park space within the city. To achieve that vision, the plan calls for a separated walking and biking trails, such as the ones being proposed, and improved crossings at the street intersections, which are also up for discussion tonight. City staff and Nova Parks are working jointly to implement the city's W N O D Master Plan. The Dual Trails Project will be carried out in tandem with the trail crossings, which are being updated by city staff through secured grant funding. The remaining crossings on the West End are being updated by the developer at the Founder's Row site. The tentative schedule, as far as I know it, for the project is to begin construction in late 2019 and finish in late 2020. I'll now turn it over to the engineering team at Nova Parks for more discussion.
Good evening.
I'm certainly not the engineering team. I'm Paul Baldino. And Jeff Tarbert and I are the city's representatives on the Board of Directors of the Northern Virginia Park Authority, or Nova Parks. Here tonight, as you know already, is Paul Gilbert, the Executive Director of Nova Parks, Brian Nolan, the Director of Planning and Development, Dan Oglehout, who is the Grant Master, I suppose, among many other things, and tonight's presenter, Steve Torgerson from A M T, Nova Parks Consultant. I just wanted to make a couple of brief introductory remarks. At a time when several capital projects are underway that are really changing life in the city, here's one more. And that's the first section of dual trail on the 45-mile-long W N O D. It's fitting that the construction of the dual trail begins here in Falls Church. This is where the first section of the trail opened in 1974. At the time, no one expected the volume of use we have today, both for recreational purposes and increasingly as a transportation corridor. Widen the trail and separating bikes from walkers will increase capacity, improve safety and user comfort, and further the city's goal of encouraging non-motorized transportation. The project's funded by a $3.8 million grant from N V T A, and Nova Parks is already preparing a grant application to extend the trail into Arlington. So if you're pleased with the project as you hear it tonight, we'd like your concurrence for Nova Parks to proceed with an administrative site plan, so they can construct the project on schedule and strengthen the application for the next round of grants from N V T A. So thank you, and let me turn it over to Steve Torgerson.
Thank you. I don't know if I actually need to say anything else. I think that that's a great overview of the trail. But once again, Stephen Torgerson from A M T, and the consultant working on this project for Nova Parks. And with that, we'll go through a short presentation, and then after that, we'll be able to solicit any questions. Next slide, please. And again. So really, we just want to go over the vision of the trail, and I think that we heard a great overview already. But some of the things that we are focusing on for the trail really are safety, capacity, and ecology. And safety and capacity are linked really close together. There was a study that was completed in 2017 by a consultant for Nova Parks, and they studied the capacity of the trail right now. And it is a beloved trail, as you all well know, in so much that it is failing almost all levels of services, or it's coming close to failing them. And so, the idea of coming up with the dual trail was to relieve some of the stress associated with all of the users on the trail right now. And the trail users are those that are commuting into the district and out of the district, those that are recreating, both for bikes and for walking, jogging, and just enjoying a day out. And the trail system that is there now, which is the multipurpose path and the gravel trail, the gravel trail is less used, for many reasons. Moms on strollers don't like it very much, because strollers on rocks don't work very well. Joggers may or may not like it that much. They found that many of the users for that side trail, it was kind of a little further away, and so it's harder to be able to jog or use. And so, that capacity portion is really important. Now, just so that you know, the safety image that you're seeing up there is staged, so that little girl isn't really hurt. But we wanted to make sure that the trail that we're designing is safe, that it's safe for the crossings of each of the roads, that it is safe as the dual trails come back to the multipurpose trail, because that will happen, that it is safe for both those that are going quickly and those that are moving a little bit slower. So ecology. So from the ecological standpoint, one of the first things I wanted to mention is, the dual trail is actually helping the community by reducing the amount of traffic that's on the road. And by reducing the amount of traffic that's on the road, we are reducing the amount of pollutions that cars create. It's reducing congestion. It's creating a more walkable, bikeable community, a multimodal community. And so that's the first point of ecology. But as we're designing the trail, we're also focused on doing no harm to the corridor as we know it. And so, our focus is on creating a trail network that does not increase stormwater to the surrounding community, that opens up opportunities for habitat, especially for our pollinators and our bird species. And so, those things are important to us as we're going through the design process. Next slide. So, the other goal that we're dealing with is maintenance. Nothing happens in this world, or stays as we hope it would stay, without maintaining it. And so, we have been talking with the Nova Parks maintenance staff and working through different trail typologies that they can actually maintain with the funding that they currently have. And so, it has been one of the driving forces as we've been moving through the design process. As you all know, or maybe you don't know, the trail corridor is used by not just, not just as a trail, but it is also used as a corridor for communication. A T and T has a communication trunk line that runs right down the middle of it. That trunk line provides services to the community that are invaluable. In addition to that, your power also happens to run right through the middle of this corridor. And so, Dominion is also a partner in this corridor, as is the city. And so, as we've been working on this project, we have been working closely with all of our partners to make sure that the trail corridor that we're designing is incorporated with all of the partners. And then, our final thing to discuss is budget. As was mentioned before, we have two grants of about $3.8 million. And so, that's the budget that we have. The 30% design that we have prepared and that we've put together is meeting that budget right now. And that design includes design fees and construction fees. So I just want to run through the project limits quickly. And, well, you have screens in front of you, so you can see it better than anybody else. So, we have Little Falls Crossing, that we've already talked about, Great Falls Crossing. Then we have North Oak Street. And then, moving up a little bit closer there, I don't know if my eyes are getting tired as I get older, or... Oh, you have the beer set. Awesome. And then we have more Spring Street. So, we've already talked about those four crossings. And so, we are coordinating and collaborating with the city to make sure that the trail can fit with those crossings. And we have had a number of meetings with them, and will continue to work together. The other two crossings that we have are on Northwest Street and also Grove Avenue. And as was mentioned before, those are being developed by the Founder's Row Development. So, the trail, it is bound on two sides, where it's going to basically run through the length of the city as a dual trail, and then tie in together. You are seeing several colors on that screen. The blue is, or the dashed blue line that you see, is going to be trail that we're tying into on both sides. And that's to the west of Grove Avenue and to the east of Little Falls Street. Then there's going to be a section of 16-foot-wide trail, that is multipurpose trail. That is where the dual trail ties in. And we did that purposely, so that as bikes and pedestrians come back together, that we have enough sight distance to be able to do so safely. And then, the core that you see, which is in the dashed orange or yellow, that is where the dual trails exist. Also, I wanted to be able to mention that up to the right, we have the existing VDOT project that's underway, which is the Route 29 Bridge. And I'm sure that you are all aware of that. And also wanted to mention that there is the four-mile run, which the trail does go over. So on the next slide, we just wanted to give a taste of what the trail looks like now, and the locations. Notice the power lines that you will see in all of the images. And there are two sets of power lines in some of the images. For example, on Grove Avenue West, which is on the lower left-hand side, you will see the transmission lines above, the high tensile. But then you'll also see smaller power lines there. And so, as we are working with Dominion Power, we are collaborating with them, and they have certain things that they just can't live with. One of the things they can't live with is trees under their power lines. It causes a problem with them. And so, we are aware of their standards and are working with them to be able to provide a trail that is beautiful and ecological and functions. You see the trail on Northwest Street looking west, and then a little further on North Street looking east. The next slide, in most of these are the intersection, you'll see the trail and the corridor as it looks today. I wanted to point out the Walter L. Mess Memorial, that you see on the lower right-hand side. And just so that everybody knows, the trail does not include the design for that memorial. But what it does include is not prohibiting it from happening in the future. The next slide. I wanted to point out, on the middle slide, that you see Little Falls Street West, where the paved gravel trail moves up on the slope, and is actually higher. And so, when we have been doing design work for the dual trail, we were looking at this corridor, and how do we fit two trails where only one exists right now? And we have designed solutions for that. And then, on the lower right-hand side, is the Veteran Commons Memorial. And once again, we're not designing that right now, but we are making sure that the design for the dual trails does not prohibit it from being included and incorporated in the future. Also, the trail is really not impacting those locations right now either. So, these are the two typical sections that I discussed a little bit earlier. So, the bottom is the 16-foot multipurpose trail. And that's basically bracketing the trail on either side, where we tie in. And then we have the dual trail. The dual trail has two-foot shoulders, 11-foot bike trail, then we have a two-foot divider, then the eight-foot pedestrian, the five-foot filter strip, and then stormwater management. And stormwater management is happening in a couple of scenarios. The next slide basically shows a perspective view of what that will look like. And we are working through scenarios of what the two-foot buffer is. But there will be something that has a texture change and a color change. And then the next few slides that we'll go through are typical sections and where they're located. On the image up here, it's hard to see where the proposed lines are, but as you look closer, you can see those proposed lines. And you can see in some circumstances where we're expanding out a little bit from where the existing footprint is. Section B B, you can see where one of the power poles is located. And in those circumstances, we're actually proposing, not in all of them, but we're proposing to go around them. This provides a little bit of a visual buffer as you look down the corridor, and also a separation and space a little bit from the two uses. On the next slide, I'll point out on Section D D, that the power pole is off to one side, and the dual trail wraps around it. And there were specific uses for that, specifically so that we could get the trail in using the least amount of cut and fill that we needed to, to be cost-effective. The next slide, in Section E E, you'll see the same kind of scenario. And then finally, on Section F F, where we're going on either side of that power pole. So I wanted to point out how the two trails tie together. And we've been working closely with Nova Parks and came up with a dozen different scenarios of how to safely bring the trails together. And these are the two options that we discussed, that we felt would both be safe and work well with the trail network. Basically allowing the pedestrians to be able to come up, to be able to see down where the bikes are coming. Obviously, these would be signed, and we would be able to put ADA-accessible indicator domes on the end, so that people that are visually impaired would be able to know when they're coming into the adjacent bike traffic. So our stormwater solutions. So we're disturbing approximately 7.7 acres. And we're required to reduce our phosphorus by 20%, which is basically 2.64 pounds of phosphorus per year. And so, is what this all boils down to, is we have stormwater management we are creating that we are going to have to deal with, basically 6,000 or 6,600 cubic feet of storage that's required to retain on-site, plus the removal of the phosphorus. And so, we've come up with a number of solutions to deal with that. One of them is a modular wetland, which is a proprietary product. The beautiful thing about this modular wetland is that it basically is that grade, and it almost disappears. So that this is not a structure that people are really going to see as they're riding their bikes down the trail, or that people that are walking are going to see. The benefit of this structure is that it removes 50% of phosphorus, and it has a really high phosphorus removal. As we are looking at trail corridors, trails have, they're often put in really tight ride-aways, and we don't have a lot of room. So with a structure like this, we can treat a lot of stormwater in a very tight area, and that's one of the benefits. The other option that we are using to our ability is the dry and the bio swale. Now, the great thing about the dry and the bio swale is that the swale has to be there no matter what, to pick up the water. And so, we're able to capture the water, but also treat it below. This swale can be planted with meadow materials that will help create habitat for our pollinators and our other wildlife. And then, in certain sections, we're also looking at permeable pavement. However, we've been looking at permeable pavement only on the pedestrian side. And specifically because bikers really do not care for it. It's kind of got a gross finish to it, and it's rather bumpy. And so, it's not something that we've been looking at where there's going to be wheels on it. And we're really only looking at it for areas as a test, to see where we can fit it in and other tight ride-aways. And then the final slide is ultimately the planting solution. So, we will have turf grass on the sides that will be mowed. And that's something to really allow And that's something to really, um, allow people to use the trail to its utmost width. Is what happens is as vegetation flops over the edge of a trail, people move closer and closer to the center. And so, we basically paved a lot of things without getting the benefit of them. And so, there will be a mowed edge. But after the mowed edge, the vision is to really create meadow space for pollinators and for other wildlife so that we can have habitat. And the benefit of that is that the maintenance is actually reduced. And with that, I will open it up for questions.
Thank you. Questions? Anyone want to start? Tim, go for it.
Yeah, this is exciting. Um, I just can't wait for this project to begin. And it looks like you've, uh, put a lot of thought in to cover the various bases that need to be covered. Just one, uh, better reaction on the permeable pavement. Um, I don't know if you've had a chance to go down to the Wharf, the project in DC, but they've got a very nice bike path that is permeable. And, uh, when I mentioned that to the developers, uh, who are going to work on the West Falls Church project, uh, one of them is PN Hoffman, and they're the primary developer at the Wharf, he said, "Yes, we're going to use the same permeable material for their bike path." And it is a bit rougher than just a plain asphalt, but it actually, I thought, provided a little better grip, that you almost felt slightly more secure. So, yeah, I, I would just encourage you to take another look at that, uh, material and see if that can help you with your, uh, uh, stormwater requirements.
Thank you.
Melissa?
Um, yeah, I'm also very excited about this project. I've been hearing about it for a while, um, from our CACT, which is our Citizens Group for Transportation and at other meetings. Um, I guess one thing I was going to ask is on the, I know our bike bridge is, you know, too narrow, and of course, we're going back into a single trail before the bike bridge across seven right now. But on the Route 29, when, are they going to build that wide enough so that if we do dual in Arlington at some point, it could dual across the bridge?
Yes, they are. That trail width is 20, the bridge is actually 20 feet wide. So it will tie in nicely with the dual trail. Now, it may be a multipurpose trail going across and there can be striping options and alternatives, but it will tie in really well.
Okay, good. Because it'd be, you know, that's just nice for the future if Arlington does dual. Well, I assume Arlington would want, if we can get the grant money, would want to do it as well. And then on the whole meadow concept, which is a really great concept, so, um, I am like the volunteer leader of our Habitat Restoration Team here in the city. So we go into our parks and take invasives out and put natives back in. And in fact, at least two invasives we've had in the city came off the trail. Um, well, we did not really have it in the city and it, it was tracked off the trail. One was porcelain berry, which is a horrible vine. So I do hope as, if you're going to have this meadow concept, as you're doing that construction, whatever we can do to get those invasives off the trail is great. And, um, I am happy to work with you guys to have some events. I have done some stuff with Nova Parks in the past, um, with Carl Moh, who, Carl and I walked that part of the trail. And I did one event on the trail that he worked with me on just to try to get some stuff off of it. So, I just want to put that out there. The meadow's not going to work well if those invasives are still there because they're just taking over.
Yeah, I agree with you completely. And it is something that, uh, we will continue to discuss as part of the invasives that are there, but also making sure that the meadow as it established has a good foothold so that it can keep the invasives out as we move forward. And so, there will be a maintenance regimen that's part of this project set so that Nova Parks can take that and say, "Okay, this is what we need to do," and make sure that it's established to minimize those invasives.
Yeah, and since a lot of them have drifted into backyards or drifted out of backyards, like, when that, when we get to that point, it wouldn't be a bad thing for us to do some kind of education to support what you're doing, to get people to take them out of the backyards. Because if you look, that's, it's kind of established along the fence line in a lot of cases.
Yep.
Right.
I mean, just general comments, I mean, yeah, this is a great thing. And I think the city is, we're very fortuitous that this is happening first in the city. Um, and I do think obviously as to the volume of traffic and, and sort of the conflicts that you have, um, in this, in the city, I think really lends itself well to implementing this here. Um, you know, I think it, I mean, as someone with younger children, I think it will encourage younger folks to venture out onto the trail. Right now, right, it's kind of dangerous, I mean, to walk, you know, with young children on the trail in, in those sections, you know, between West and Little Falls because of the high-speed bike traffic. Um, you know, with all, anyone who uses the trail I've seen near misses and, and people speeding by and, and kind of yelling at the last moment, you know, "Come passing on your right." And so, this will avoid all of that. So I think even, uh, and there are certainly lots of precedents around the country where you have high-volume dualized bike trails, and they really do work. In a prior life, you know, I lived in New York City, the west side of Manhattan has probably one of the busiest bike trails along the Hudson River. They dualized it and separated the bike traffic years ago and, um, I mean, just the safety that it provides, um, and just, you know, and then the access that, that it allows folks who aren't biking to then use it, um, for other, just to walk or for other types, for running and other things. It's just, it's just a great thing. So, um, we're lucky that it's happening and anything the city can do to, I think, to help keep it on track, uh, to, to, to get done, you know, I mean, I, I think we should do. It's a great idea.
Yes, I agree with that. I have two comments slash questions. One is, I live very close to the new bridge being built and it's obviously a big disruption to the trail. What does the construction of this look like in terms of the users for the year or whatever it takes to do it?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And it's one that we've been pondering on even since its inception. So, one of the benefits that we do have now is that we have an existing trail and it does function. And since we are going adjacent to it in many locations, we can leave some of that existing trail in place as we move forward. Now, that does not mean that there won't be sections of it that we're going to have to temporarily put, um, some type of trail in so that people can continue to access it. But the ultimate goal and vision is that the corridor would remain open during construction. And does that mean that the construction will probably be a little bit slower? It does. But it is part of making sure that we still are connecting this important multimodal corridor, um, to where people are coming and going almost every day of their lives, especially during the warm enough months that they can ride their bikes.
Yeah, it seems like the detour for the bridge is sort of doable, but I can imagine if you had to detour around big sections, it would be pretty hard and... All right, that's good to hear. And then my next question is, we talk about the, the park is 100 feet wide and let's take a veerage of that. In lots of places, that's not just been encroached on by invasive plants, it's been encroached on by neighbors who kind of use it as their backyard. So is, is there, will we essentially be reclaiming that to anticipate challenges with people that are used to it being part of their yard? I fully support making the full 100 feet available to the public, but I, I suspect we'll have some challenges there.
So, the vision is, is that that land will be reclaimed. Um, and, um, it's kind of interesting when you look at the Google Images over time, how, um, that borrowed landscape, the literal borrowed landscape has, has grown in some circumstances. But it is important that the corridor remain, um, a public corridor, that's what it is. And so, that's, that's the vision is moving forward.
Yeah, absolutely. I think outreach just becomes important just to, you know, and I'm sure that Nova Parks will do that.
Sure. And I guess one of my worries is are there, I can imagine in some cases, someone saying like, "Yeah, that's fair, I understand, but like, I've got like vegetation that shields my yard." Will you be working with neighbors to help them plant new things or suggest ways to keep it, you know what I mean? Like, I can imagine if I lived there, okay, I get it, that's not mine, but now, instead of looking at some trees or bushes, I'm going to be staring at a bunch of bicyclists, I wish I had planted some bushes. Like, the sooner you get the message out, maybe the sooner people can start...
You can suggest things. And I would just say, we had that problem, we've had that problem in Cherry Hill Park because one side of the park had a lot of invasives along the fence line, and when we removed them, you could see people's backyards.
Right.
And so, people came and were complaining because we were taking these invasive things off the fence. And, well, we suggest, we just gave them suggestions for things they could put back in.
Right. It's obviously, the sooner you do that, the better. Because if they get a, like, you're growing in before everything else on the other side of it gets ripped out, that might make it an easier transition.
Yes.
But again, I 100% support that becoming a public use again, the way it should be, so...
I mean, do we know, there's that house that's right at like Pennsyl, right out of Pennsylvania and Great Falls, that almost planted like a little mini, uh, you know, like, mini farm there. Is that on, is that on parkland or is that on the...
Mostly parkland, yeah. My understanding is that, that there were some rancher there that made that semi-legitimate, but that's definitely mostly parkland.
I've talked to Carl about it. This was like 25 years ago, the WND allowed, um, well, I guess what was it, whatever Nova Parks was before, I forgot the name now, they allowed people to have little garden plots along the trail that wasn't being used. And you paid a rental fee. And then they ended the process because it was just too much administration and people were doing things they shouldn't be doing. And this one guy kept sending the check-in even though they had ended the program. And then he finally did stop sending the check-in, but he has still not moved all his stuff off the trail.
All right, so stuff like that, I guess, all right.
He planted corn last year, it got pretty high, I remember.
Yeah, I just, it's, he was also very concerned because Cedar Street, the Paper Street comes out right next to that.
Yep, right. I think we've talked about that as well.
Yeah, the whole thing.
All right, I don't have any other questions. Again, I think it's outstanding and, um, I do think we're fortunate to have Falls Church be the first place for it. You know, I, hopefully it'll be super successful and I will motivate funding for extending it throughout the course of the, the park where, where it makes sense.
Wonderful. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
And thanks to all the rest of you who came out.
Thank you. Uh, now we're going to jump back to the demographics chapter of the comprehensive plan, which I'm sure we're all excited about. It is getting to be late, so I hope we can do this efficiently.
This is a work session.
Is this hollering again? There's just, oh, it's, you're done?
Do you have to do demographics?
All right, we're only, one second, we have a bathroom break. I didn't even know there was a bathroom here.
Yeah, it's the first.
We haven't had a tour.
No.
There's a bathroom and then this is still bulletproof. People shoot at us, you're going to drop, fall back there, and you can go back through the sheriff's office. Sheriff's office is still behind us.
Will Sheriff Bill be there?
Not at night.
I'll push this button too.
[laughing].
That'll scare everybody away.
Has anyone used that yet officially?
Husher.
The husher. I think the idea is if we're going to, not us, city council's going to have like a secret conversation they want.
Yeah.
Is that what you're doing?
I assume, actually, I bet it's for the judge, not for city council.
Like for GetSmart?
No, you've seen it, like in a court show, I gotta have a conference with the judge, you want anyone to hear you. This... Cuts the mic and puts on...
Wait, turn that on. Let's talk and see if Cory can hear.
I apologize to the, uh, FCC TV person who's dealing with this mess right now. I don't even know which cameras you are. Is there one behind us out there?
Yeah, there's behind us and there's there.
Oh, cameras?
See them, aren't they?
Well, there's security cameras and there's TV cameras.
Yeah, TV cameras, there's two of them.
There's two, there's two back here.
Yeah, there's four TV cameras and four security, I guess.
At least four. One, two, three, four, five.
Oh, oh, there's another one, you're right, okay.
Dude, there are lots of wires still hanging out.
I mean, FCC TV people are around the edge on that side.
Are they?
They're on the other side.
So if we turn off our mic...
And there's a cell back there too, we could lock someone up.
Nice. Nice. Next time Russ is acting up.
It's, and it's like scary, there's no, like, you can't see out of it hardly.
All right, we got like 20 minutes, let's make it happen. Is this you, Shannon?
Yes. Um, so one thing that I wanted to highlight upfront, Mr. Fuller had mentioned when he was going through the schedule, um, there's been a change since this staff report has, was posted. Um, so now the schedule for the demographics chapter is to keep it on track with the housing chapter. So this will be coming back to Planning Commission for action on August 5th. So this one will not be coming back on July 15th. Um, so just wanted to mention that, um, at the forefront. Um, and so just highlighting some of the things from, uh, the staff report, uh, the last time that the Planning Commission saw the demographics chapter was on April 15th. And so, since that time, there have been a couple council work sessions. Uh, staff has also been taking the, uh, demographics chapter, uh, throughout the, uh, various boards and commissions. Uh, there was a community meeting that was held on June 8th. There was also a community survey that ran, um, the end of May into, into June. And there have been a number of changes, uh, to the chapter. Uh, so just highlighting, um, those changes, this is online, 15 through 51 of the staff report. Uh, on, under the demographics trends, there was a chart and some explanatory text that was added, uh, to highlight, uh, the overall changes in the city's long-term trends in household income. Uh, I don't know if you all remember back when, uh, the consultant had come and presented some of those demographic trends, uh, in probably March. Uh, one of the things that was noted is that there was a surge in that $50,000 to $100,000 income range. But if we're looking at the long-term trends in the city's household income, um, we're seeing that it's the $150,000 plus is actually where the city's been experiencing the most increase. So that was one of the changes in the chapter, highlighting, um, both that short-term trend, that 50 to that $100,000 surge, and then the larger long-term trend as well. Um, in the connections and strategy section, there have also been, um, a number of direct references, um, to better knit this comprehensive plan chapter to other chapters of the comp plan. Um, there was also some text added to emphasize that there will continue to be natural changes to the city's demographics regardless of any changes at, in development. Uh, there was also a map and some explanatory text added to the transportation connections section. Uh, and this is to illustrate how some, uh, new and planned development within the city can be supported by multiple transportation options. And then again, there was another, uh, council work session held on June 17th and a few more changes, uh, to the draft chapter that came out of that work session. Under the demographic trends, uh, section, um, it was specified that the increase in the stock of studios and one bedroom units has been one of the factors that has contributed to the increase in the number of, uh, people living alone within the city. And then a few more changes in the connection and strategy section. Uh, the paragraph under housing affordability was revised to be a little bit more clear. Uh, there was a further text added, uh, to emphasize that the half-circle map, um, highlights opportunities for residents to walk or cycle to their destinations. Uh, the public facilities connections section was, uh, expanded to also include, uh, public services. And then a strategy was, uh, added to the connections section to address planning for public safety needs as the city's population increases. And then finally, another connection that was added, uh, this was something that staff heard, uh, at several of the different boards and commissions, is the need for the city to create policies to encourage the development of Class A office space. And so, again, with the, with the schedule, uh, looking to, uh, at this point, another council work session on July 15th and then coming back to Planning Commission on August 5th, um, for action. And then from there, going to the city council on August 12th for action. Uh, so that's all that I had for the staff report, but I can answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you. May we have questions?
I don't really have questions. I do have, on that figure 14, the transportation connectivity diagram, just for consistency. Um, well, you know, I, it's funny because it says that West Falls Church Grocery and it says, um, 301 West Blad Harris here. But when I was looking at it, I was like, why aren't we mentioning Giant as being in there as well?
So I think the purpose of that map was to highlight some of the more recent projects that have happened, not necessarily just things that already exist in the city, but just to highlight what's, um, either new or planned in the future.
Okay. And it just seems kind of odd, but it's right there, we're not going to mention it. Because we're basically mentioning all the other grocery stores.
Well, we don't mention BJ's.
Oh, that's true. But BJ's is not in these circles. BJ's is on the edge of the city.
That's true. Um, Tim, you got anything?
Uh, I don't believe I do. I think the changes are appropriate and they improve the end results, so, uh, so, very good.
I can tell Brett's got lots of comments.
Not in this section.
Yeah, I think this, you know...
I think it's act, I mean, I think it does what it needs to do. I mean, every comprehensive plan, you know, needs to obviously be looking forward to demographic changes in the city. And I think we're doing that even, and because we're so small, we can really drill down on a, on a fine-grained level, and I think we've done that.
Also, I do like the references where it says, "If you want to know more about this, look at this chapter." And we ought to, ought to think about doing that in other chapters more. We, I think we did some in the modes, multimodal modes, I forgot the name.
The mobility permits.
Yeah. It's a very, it was easier when it was transportation.
I guess we could, uh, put a plug in for, uh, the impact on the environment in the sense of having a growing population is going to make it more difficult for us to achieve our greenhouse gas emission reduction goals, which are in terms of totals, not per capita. So, uh, if, if there's interest in including that, I would support it, but, uh, I'm usually somewhat by myself on that sort of thing.
I wouldn't say by yourself, but you are on the leading edge.
There you go.
Yeah, I think, you know... Yeah, I think, you know, the demographics chapter, unlike some of the other ones, is sort of nuts and bolts, but it also, I think it informs a lot of the other ones. And obviously, the affordable housing thing is the key example of that. But even like environmental stuff, a lot of it ties back into the demographics. My thought, my main thought when thinking about the demographics chapter is, we last did it in 2005, and it's 2019 now, like, this is the chapter that should be updated more often than anything, because I think it informs a lot of the other ones. So I don't know that anything goes into that here, but I, to me, I'd be, I would love to see this thing get revised more, you know, minor revisions more frequently.
Like, for example, the census 2020 results will come out like in 2021. And so, I mean, that's probably a time to maybe make an intermediate update.
Yeah.
You know, because there'll be a lot of new data that we get from that.
And quite frankly, this stuff can change pretty quickly. You know, we build, you know, we build up by the high school, we build a few more things, and some of these numbers change, or we don't, and the projections change. So if that can be captured in here anywhere, that this is, this data should probably, I think the census is a good target, but, but I know we're always kind of revising something, and it just takes a long time.
There are strategies that do specifically mention that. If you look on page 16, one of the strategies is to update the city's demographic projections at least once every five years, and that's, again, is going along with what state code requires in terms of reviewing your comprehensive plan every five years.
Yeah, and I don't want to get us in trouble with the state, but the last draft was in 2005, which is way more than five years. So I know it takes us longer, but I, I guess what I'm saying is, unlike some of the other ones where there's a lot of discussion, talk about goals and all this stuff, this one's a lot of numbers, and yeah, I think if we definitely had this one updated every five years, even if it's literally just, hey, we updated the numbers.
It's less resource-intensive to be able to do this more frequently.
Nuts and bolts. So I would encourage you to do that. But otherwise, I think it's good, I like, I'm with, Tim, I think the changes that we've, the clarifications mostly, I think have really helped. You know, I think that was the main thing last time, where some of the bits of data were kind of confusing without the clarification, so that seems helpful. But I don't think we, it doesn't sound like we have big changes or tweaks from here. So, good job. And we're down to basically nobody.
And also, I looked at the, the survey, and I thought the results, I mean, about what you would think, so I don't think there were any surprises in that survey.
Yeah.
I think, I don't know, I guess the thing that, it's not surprising, but the historic preservation ended up at the bottom of what they thought was most important for future planning. But housing's at the top, which makes, you know, it's interesting because we're in the middle of doing the housing section, too.
Small sample size.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, these, what was the, no response on the survey, 90?
90. That's better than some surveys.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, these surveys are, I think, worth doing, but you get 90 people, and it's probably 50 of them are the same 50 people that ever weigh in on anything.
Right.
It's hard to draw huge conclusions, but hey, it's what we got, so. And I only filled it out four times, so. Just kidding, I filled it out once. All right, I think that's it. Is that all on the agenda? We can go? All right, adjourned.
Can we go?
Maybe Russ will be here next time.
Do you want me to leave?